You may begin.
All right, we'll consider ourselves called to order for the March 29th special call meeting of the Calvert City Planning Commission. The time is 5:34 and I guess the first item of business would be, would be we're supposed to recess into our public hearing. So we'll do that. Greg, if you want to lead us through that, we'll go through that step.
In this particular case, we don't have any particular findings and so forth to make. We simply need for Danny and or Rick to explain just sort of what, you know, explain the, the plat that's being submitted, the preliminary plat that's being submitted. John has actually, was it Chad? Who was it that did our engineering report? John?
That would have been the gentleman from HCR. Did the engineer?
That was.
And I sent a letter.
That was Scott Brown. Scott Brown has a, has a preliminary subdivision plat review and then John and I went through that plat review of Scott and John and John sketched out our, our thoughts and, and ideas about, about Scott's comments. So I'm sure Rick, you and Danny have looked through those. So just kind of explain your plat.
Let me put the plat up so everybody can see it. Okay. Great.
Yeah. And any reactions to those comments? And well, there is no public, is there, John?
There's been, nobody asked to be, be on attendance. No.
Okay. So if nobody, nobody questions that, then we'll let you guys make your, make your explanations and then, and then the, the board can ask whatever questions they want to.
I assume everybody can see.
We can?
Yes.
Okay, this is Rick Tosh with Dummer Surveying and Engineering. We're the firm that's subdividing this property for Danny. He bought this in two tracks. It's lot one at fronts here on Seventh Street. And then the part you see in the back, there's lot two of this development and he bought that at a later date and we are dividing this up into several tracks, one of which in the back, it's denoted as track two A. That track along with the, the small sliver that you see on the west side fronting on the road there, that is track or lot one A. Those two are being consolidated and it's being proposed as a sale to the city. The big area in the back is currently being used by the city as one of, one or two of the soccer fields. The track that you see to the right or to the east of that kind of triangular shaped track is noted is lot two B. That is a wooded area that Danny is retaining and has plans to build a residence back there. It has access to East Seventh Street, forty foot corridor, which is consolidated with that lot, making that all one parcel. The other four parcels, you can see one B, one C, one D, and one E, all front on Seventh Street and have the adequate road frontage as required. And all these lots have access to sewer and water. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody, everybody saw where, what he was talking about with the consolidation of one A and two A here on the, through this by abolishing the line here.
John, you might, you might explain that little sliver right there and why that came about and how it came about.
Well, just, this is just giving us extra, it gives us some extra ground for the walking trail area down here, but it also, it links into this lot, which is again, the soccer field, the U-12 field is here. We've been using that as a handshake. We've maintained it, this portion of it anyway, for the soccer and they've allowed us to use soccer there, the U-12. So we're in a product portion, we've entered into a verbal agreement with Mr. Greenfield for the purchase, purchase of these two lots. And then in two B, that triangular lot, this keeps it from being landlocked. It also gives it the correct frontage needed off of Seventh to create a lot that can be developed as a residential lot. And the rest of them actually already front on Seventh. So that should not create any issues with access as far as that goes.
John, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, I know several years ago, a long time ago, almost thirty years ago, we inquired about building on that, what would be probably lots one D or one E, and we're told it was in the floodplain. So.
But it's incorrect.
That was just curious.
I don't, it may have been years ago. It's not now. It's not listed now. The floodplain is north, north of this, this area. It would be up, up here, maybe up here next to Fifth Avenue. That is a flood area up there near the, where the water goes through Fifth Avenue over across to Freeman. That area up in there is a floodplain, but this down here is not listed in the, in the 100 year or the two percent, one, one percent.
Five hundred.
It's in the five hundred?
No, I said it's not in the 100 or 500.
That is correct. It's not in, and even if it was in the 500, it could still be, I mean, that's still developable and it doesn't require a permit. The 100 year would be, or what they refer to as the 100 year wouldn't require the permit. But that's, that is not.
But John, in the review that city did, there were some questions about drainage. Has, has that been addressed?
This is what I have now. I don't have any of the drainage showing. That's something would need to be done before the final plat is approved.
Okay.
Need to do that. That would have to be added to it.
What are you referring to then, John? I don't.
Anywhere the water would drain, like you've got the drainage area that runs in through here. And we're, and of course, we see the, the, the ground flow, which would take the water this way based on these contours. But is there any other drainage that's anticipated going on there?
There is a drainage right here on this back line, right there. There's already a ditch there and that takes care of all this water.
Yeah, that would need to be shown. That would need to be shown.
There's already a ditch there.
Yeah.
And all, all this water from up here, from one B on down, it, there's a ditch here in the middle of the property and it turns and goes down to that one.
Okay. So what would need to be done is that, that needs to be shown on here. The drainage, it's on this lot as it goes to the, off the lot and this one here where that actually is in, in there. The ditch that runs through here. And then you said it was something back here, Danny?
It's, well, that is a ditch back here.
It's not, you've got an easement, but it doesn't show a, proposed easement, but it doesn't show the.
It goes from that ditch back there goes from about where my corner is right now.
I can't see.
It goes from there to the, from the right side of lot one C.
Right about here?
Right there.
Okay.
It goes from there all the way over to, there's a culvert over here.
Yeah. We just, that needs to be shown.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and then it's a, just a natural made ditch that drains into it that comes from up here on lot one E, I guess it is.
Yeah, these, as you can see, there's a.
Drainage center line is shown on there.
The what now?
You get that drainage center line that you are discussing is shown on this plat.
It's not on mine.
It's on the one that you got on the screen.
Um, I've got a proposed utility easement. I've got a sewer.
All right. Look over here on lot one E. Look down towards just, just behind the twenty-five foot building, step back, you see center line of drainage you're pointing to that, that line. It's a long line and. That line goes all the way across one D, across the top back corner of one C and then runs along the north line of one B and then crosses into the city property. You can see that same line there, same designation.
Because it's not on, on this scale, I can't see it. So hang on a minute.
As you can see it there where it's going through, since twenty-five foot building and step back, the line goes.
Okay. Where'd you say that was that? Cause I've got approximate location of a, of a six inch diameter PVC sewer lateral for lot one C.
Okay.
I've got a setback. I have a.
John, move, keep moving north. Next, next one up, next one, that, that dashed line there. No, next, move up north. Up.
Keep going.
Oh, right there. Down, down. Back one. There you go.
Oh, this.
Solid black line.
Oh, this one right here that travels down like that?
That's it.
Is that it?
That's the center. No, back there in lot one, one E.
Oh, there. Well, dead gum. Okay. My mistake.
It's also in your legend.
I didn't see it come back this far is what I, that threw me off.
Yeah, it's also in your legend up there, that, that line designation shown as center line of drainage.
Right.
Rick, one thing. It's also down here across on lot one A, you know, where the ditch comes across it. It, it's also shows up down there as drainage. If you'll look there.
I see it. Yeah, I see it now. Right there.
Now, does that address the drainage that you was talking about? I think it will. Rick, one thing you might do is, is you might put a, a couple of notes there on that, on that western edge at the end of those two drainage lines, like.
Okay.
Right there and up there. Just again, you, you've got it on one end of it on the lot one E. Yeah, there and there. If you just put that same note up there, that'd be handy. I know it's in the legend, but that'd make it easier to, to find it and not get lost.
No problem. Thank you. I had, I completely oversaw, oversaw that. Then I just looked over, didn't, didn't realize that was what it was. For some reason, I think it had contour line when I saw that. Even though it's different, I know it is. I can see that now, but.
Yeah, it's easy to get lost in the line types. John, one, lot one B, is it that lot currently, is that maintained by the city now too?
No.
Okay, that's not, okay.
No, only two A is maintained by us. We go right up to the wood line and then down to, actually we maintain proper, well, I guess it does. We've been down, down to the ditch, I think. Is that not right, Danny?
Yeah.
And we mowed it. So I guess a little portion of it we do because we're mowing down to that ditch. And then up in here is, well, but this is where the, the soccer field is.
Right, right. Okay.
And this line right here, the gazebo and everything is up here. It's not, none of those walkings and all that, that's not on this property. It's up on our property here.
Okay.
Which was a, I'm not sure how he, he thought the engineer from HCR thought it might encroach, but it, it does not. So.
John, I don't know that I've seen the, the review the engineer did. I don't know that I've seen his comments.
Hmm, I didn't. I thought I sent that out. Maybe not. Okay. Let's see. I'll send you, I'll send you both what he did and what we, our response. And you and I talked about it, I guess, but we just went that far instead of sending it to you actually. Remember, we talked, that's how we made some changes.
Yes, yeah. I was wondering if that, those comments that you made to me might be.
They did come from that. Yes. Yes, sir.
So, yeah, we've, we've addressed everything that you commented to me about. I think we've addressed that.
Well, you've answered, you've answered my, my, my questions on the drainage. I didn't notice it before, but I, you know, we know it's there now. And you've got on here, the approximate location of this, of this easement, right, or this sanitary sewer is a private lateral. It's not a, that's not a, that's not a sewer line with the city. That's a private lateral for this house. Do you, we know, we don't, do we don't need anything as far as the connection to that lateral? Do we, Greg, or do we? It shows it coming back to the parcel on one C where the house is. Does that, does that need to be shown?
But that's the lateral for the house on lot one C, right? It's not an easement. It's not an easement reserved for anybody, right?
That's the only house it serves is that one right there.
Rick, is it, there's, it's not a, no, there's no easement reserved there, is there?
No, but we're, we're proposing a fifteen foot utility easement that runs along the, on the south side, the north ends of lots, one B, one C.
That's so that lateral can actually still be there and divide this lot.
Right? Yeah, yeah.
Well.
Give him the right to keep his lateral there, you know, when one B is sold off, that, that owner can't complain about the lateral being there because it's within an easement.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Now, there's that, is that an eas, that wouldn't be an easement to the city, would it?
Well, we've proposed it as a public easement.
I'm sorry. I had two of you talking. Try again.
We proposed it as a public easement.
So, so it would, it would not be dedicated to the city, John. It would just, but it would be available to the city. The city needed to run something in it.
Okay. Okay. I'm just curious. It wasn't sure how that worked out on that.
Yeah.
It's all the questions I have, unless anybody else does and if there's something else that they need or.
John, on the, on the south, okay, yeah. Zoom in on the south end there. We, we're showing utilities there too, aren't we? I believe the water and sewer shown on that, on the south edge of those lot, around Seventh Avenue.
Yeah, this is water. That's sewer.
Okay.
This is the center line of the roadway.
I know one of the questions engineer raises about the electrical feed to the house and I don't remember if that's overhead or underground, but.
I don't know.
Yeah. That's the only other thing I see that.
It's, it's underground.
It is underground?
It is underground.
Comes off of Seventh and goes back in there?
Yeah, it comes, it actually comes from the apartments, from the area of the apartments up there. And there's a utility pole back in behind that house there on lot one C.
Okay.
It's fed from that underground.
Okay. So, okay. So it actually goes overhead until it gets to lot one C, then goes underground to the house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a utility serve or easement for that? Do you know, Danny?
No, I don't.
Okay.
It's actually, it's on the property, that pole and in, in all of that is on the property of lot one D.
Lot one B.
Is that an issue? Being fed, electricity being fed from this one to here? Underground? I guess the utility would put in, would have put in a, I don't know, is it run by an individual or run by the electric company?
Electric.
Okay. So they should have an easement then?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that need to be shown?
Rick, Rick, do you know if, have you seen that easement, Rick?
No, I haven't. No. No, I know, when it's overhead, they don't bother with the easement. If it crosses the corner of a lot, it just crosses the corner of a lot is the way they normally do it. I mean, it's just, that's just the terminology of it. But now underground, you know, it's a little bit more obvious and, and a little more intrusive. We can locate the, if we can get the utility company, power company to mark that service line, we can locate it and put it within an easement.
Yeah. It, you're gonna, you probably aren't gonna want to make it a public easement though, are you? You'd probably.
No, we would make it, we make it a private easement serving lot one C. It'd be crossing the pole of one D and crossing the portion of two B and then terminate there at the lot line of one C.
Yeah, we probably need to reflect it just so in the future, people looking at it are not going, you know, they won't stumble, stumble across it and not know it's there.
That's the only other thing I see. Anyone else have any questions or comments for Rick or for Danny?
So let me, let me, so you're thinking all we need to do then would be to add the discomment just for, on the, the drainage that we've got on the one side, just put it on the other end so that we've got a little more helpful and then show that private easement for the utility, for the electric rather?
Right.
Okay.
And the other comment they made, that the engineer made was about changing the title just for the, the, instead of being Danny Greenfield property, maybe more descriptive. I don't, I don't know if that matters or not.
He said something, you know, just using Danny Greenfield subdivision. If Danny were to buy something else and divide it, you know, that's the only thing he was thinking about. Just something's more specific to this. Maybe something like adding East Seventh Avenue subdivision.
Yeah.
Danny Greenfield, East Seventh Avenue, just adding a couple of words that identifies it a little better. Are you okay with that, Danny?
Yeah.
Okay. Other than that, I don't know of anything else that would be of any concern that I've.
Hold on just a minute. I want to look at something here. I'm trying to look, see if this area already has a name that might be expanded on. Cause this, this property that Danny bought, it was lot one and lot two of a flat, but I don't know that it had a formal subdivision name.
Okay. That's what I'm looking for now.
It is refers to it as a minor subdivision plat number 101 for Calvert City Realty Company. So it doesn't have a formal name. It's just, it's just a block of land just that's numbered, got parcels one through, I guess it's one through five on it, four, one through four. So what you suggested was Danny Greenfield, give me, give me that name, what you wanted on there again.
Yes. All I said was just East Seventh Street subdivision, you know, major stuff, whatever. Just something to identify that Danny is a developer and, and this is a subdivision he's created on East Seventh Avenue or East Seventh Street, I should say, not avenue. Actually, is it avenue or street?
It's street according to my records.
Think we looked it up and it was avenue.
So it's avenue, it's avenue.
Yeah.
Seven, Seventh Avenue.
Okay, I'll change that. But yeah. Greenfield Seventh Avenue subdivision. Yeah, probably Rick ought to update on the drawing itself because you've got Seventh Street on the drawing. So change that to avenue as well.
Yeah, I've made that note.
Okay, perfect. All right. Any other comments?
None, sir.
Rick, Danny, you have any more comments?
No, if we don't hurry up and get this done, I'm not going to live long enough to do any kind of development.
Well, we could keep you out of Florida for a little while.
What's happened to us, Danny? I'm, I'm, I have those same kind of thoughts these days. Dad, Bernard, what's happening?
All right. Now I hear a motion. We adjourned the public.
Let me, let me ask you a question. If he gets us back in, can we, will it be good enough? We'd be ready to move on this for, at the next regular meeting?
Sure.
The April meeting? Okay.
Sure.
Third Monday, guys of this, of April will be our next regular meeting and we get this stuff back with its changes and we could move forward to try to get the ma, or the, the final adopted then. Does that work for you, Rick? Danny?
Yeah.
Okay. What was the date?
Just call a special week.
Uh. It would be, I'd close the calendar out just, just at that time. Hang on a minute.
April nineteenth.
Yeah, April nineteenth.
April nineteenth?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Everybody's good with that?
Sounds me.
Okay. All right. Then now we'll, we'll shoot for that date then. Okay, guys?
Very good.
Okay, I'm gonna have a, a meeting that conflicts with that, but I'm gonna get somebody to cover it.
Very good.
Everybody does their planning commission meetings by Zoom now.
Once you get the updates, Rick just fire it to in PDF and then we'll make sure it's right. And then once it's done that way, then we'll go ahead and get the signed copies and.
Okay. Oh, the biggest thing I see here for is what we've discussed is getting us underground power service from the pole to the residence. Get that marked by the utility company. And once they do that, then I can send a crew out there and we'll spot it and then I can show this easement on here where it is and really is in the world.
Okay.
Very good. I like the plan.
Sounds like a winner. All right, I'm gonna take the, the plat off. And we'll, oh, I'm showing the calendar on there. That was great. I love this. Okay. Um. Mr. Chairman.
All right. So we'll, we'll reconvene our special call meeting. Next time a business would be the approval of the minutes of our.
Next time of business will be the approval of the minutes of our March fifteenth regular meeting. Those are in your packet. Any questions, comments? What's the pleasure of the commission? I've reviewed minutes and I'll make a motion. We accept them as written.
Motion by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kathy. All in favor say aye, or raise your hand. I guess we've decided it's easier. Looks like we've got all hands raised. Anyone opposed by like sign, that takes care of that. And then, uh, so our, our next would be a, the approval or conditional approval of preliminary plat that we've looked at tonight. So we've got the comments that were made tonight that need to be, will be updated on that. John, do you, do we need to take any action tonight? Do you want to wait until the nineteenth meeting to make, actually take a action on this?
Well, I think with the preliminary, we've got, unless Greg, unless there's a vote they need to make, we've already got what needs to be addressed before it can be finalized. And I think it's really all.
We've got a few little things that, got a few little things to do. Just let it ride and, and when those things get, we'll just approve it immediately when those things get.
Yeah, Ricky makes those changes and we'll submit those in April, then we could just, it'll be a formality. We can kick it in, kick it out.
Yep.
Okay, no problem. We'll get her done. Very good.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, folks. Thank you, Danny.
Good to see you, Danny.
Hi. This is, this is, all many, that's the only business we can take care of, right?
That's correct.
All right, and motion we adjourn.
All moved.
Bye Kathy. Is there a second?
A second.
Meeting by Darren, all in favor say, or all in favor raise your hands. I've got hands going up wherever, meeting adjourned at six oh six. Thank you very much, folks.
Thanks, guys.
Good evening.